Okay. Okay, I'm going to call the Town of Batavia Planning Board meeting to order for Tuesday, May 4th. Because of the novel coronavirus pandemic and pursuant to Governor Como's executive order, the Town of Batavia Planning Board meetings will be held electronically via Zoom, video conference, call conference, instead of a public meeting. You may access the meeting by using the following, and obviously you all had the numbers because you're there. The first thing on our agenda is a public hearing. Kim, would you read the notice, please?
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Town of Batavia Planning Board regarding an application by Core Veterans Memorial Drive Company LLC for a special use permit to add a drive-through to an existing commercial building to open a new restaurant, Chipotle, at 4222 Veterans Memorial Drive in the Town of Batavia. This land is zoned commercial. Said hearing will be held on Tuesday, May 4th, 2021 via Zoom meeting at 7:00 PM, at which time all interested persons will be heard. Written comments will be accepted prior to that date. You may email the chairman@kjazinski@townofbatavia.com or put your written comments in the Dropbox at the Town Hall by May 3rd. I order the Town of Batavia Planning Board, Kathleen Jazinski, Chairman.
Do we have anyone from Core here tonight that wants to tell us a little bit about Chipotle? Matt Mahaney, is there someone here?
Not that I'm aware of. We do not have anybody on behalf of Core Development.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about it?
Sure. So, the application from Core Development is, as Kim had mentioned, it's for a restaurant. The use of a, the commercial use of a restaurant is allowed within the commercial district, which is currently zoned. It does require the site plan review from the planning board because it's a commercial operation. It also requires us to look at the drive-through aspect of what they're proposing, and a drive-through within the commercial district does require a special use permit as well. After reviewing this application and what has been submitted, the Building and Zoning Department finds that all the criteria in regards to the special use permit have been met. Some of that criteria is outlined in Section 235-37 of the Town of Batavia zoning code, which regulates such things as the lot size, the lot frontage, the depth, along with the size and the amount of driveways allowed when using a or proposing a drive-through business. As I said, the criteria is all met, and our department does not have any issues with the proposed application.
Thank you, Matt. Is there anyone here tonight that wishes to speak at this public hearing? Okay, I will, I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? And I will leave the public hearing open until we get to it on our agenda, in case someone comes in later. But I guess we'll go on with our regular meeting. Roll call, please, Kim.
Paul Marquesi. Unmute yourself.
Here.
Paul McCullough.
Here.
Lou Paganello. Don Partridge.
Yeah.
Jeremy Lyles. Jonathan Long.
Here.
Steve Tanner. Brooks Holly.
Here.
Kenny.
Yeah, I'm here, okay. Do we have, oh yeah, Brooks Holly will be voting for Lou Paganello. Now, we have two sets of minutes, and you got them, they're very detailed. Good job, Kim.
Thank you.
The first, the first one is on the public hearing we had for the proposed recreation land owned by Brandon Lewis. Did everyone have a chance to read that over?
So moved.
Second.
Who said moved? Paul, Paul Marquesi, John Long seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. The second set would be for our regular meeting of April 20th.
So moved.
Oh, second.
Okay, was, who moved it?
Uh, John.
John, and then Paul McCullough.
And then Paul. Okay. Were there any corrections or additions? Does anyone have anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, we have a new thing on our agenda called Public Comments. And is there anyone here tonight that would wish to speak to the board? This is not a debate, it's not a public hearing, it's for you to tell us something you think we should know. You would have three to five minutes to do that. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to the board?
I would.
Raise your hand. Brandon Lewis, okay. Oops. We, we don't hear you, Brandon.
Uh, the other person I think had their hand up first, I know they mentioned before, they can, they can go first, I can wait, that's not a problem.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, Sarah. Who was first?
The 344.
34424255.
And who was it?
Hi, that's, Linda, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, yes. I just had two questions, or actually issues. One is I'd like to know how a special use permit is reviewed, and this is regarding Area 51 behind our house, because they have been in violation of the dates and times of usage since 2006, which I have a whole file here, which I know you can't see, so I apologize. But we have complained numerous times about using the track outside of the times, outside of the days, and we have gotten nowhere. So at this point, we just need to know what actually we can request to review a special use permit once it's out there. So I'm just trying to get some guidance on that, because we've submitted everything, we, I mean, we have emails, we've called people, we've written down times, days, I just don't know where else to go at this point when someone's in violation of the permit.
Okay, is that it, Linda?
Uh, second one is just, we're looking to see, do you have a date when you're looking to make a decision on the special use permit for the recreational area for Mr. Lewis?
No, I guess I can answer that. No, we don't. We have to make.
Okay, is, will that be on the agenda?
Of course. And you, you get the agenda.
Yes. Okay, I just didn't know if that was brought up in the meeting I'd missed, so I didn't want to miss it, thank you.
And as far, as far as special use permit, Chris Mosher is coming into our next meeting, and he has already given us the dates of his, of his events. So he'll be talking to us at our next meeting.
Okay. Is the public able to talk during that, or no?
Well, with this new rule, you can always speak under Public Comments.
Okay.
It will not be a debate, it will not be a debate, and you won't ask questions.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Next.
Hello.
Go ahead, Brandon.
Okay.
Oh, we hear you, we hear you.
Okay. So yeah, I just wanted to address the board and the public, and just address some of the, you know, issues and concerns that were brought up during the public hearing, and I think there were a lot of good points that were made. But I also think, obviously, there were some misconceptions, some misinformation, so I just wanted to put that out there. Some of the easy ones, some of the quick ones that I have, one of the gentlemen made a comment about the RV park, and he pulled a number about 130 campers being out there, and I don't know where that number came from, but it would be very similar to what my neighbor, Mr. Mosher, does. Dry camping, excuse me. No hookups, no sewer, no water, maybe electrical service at some point, but it would just be, you know, space for people that are coming in for training, or maybe just people traveling through the area, just to park their RVs. So very basic in that regard, I think. The hours, you know, that is certainly something that we're willing to discuss and negotiate with. I think it's very reasonable, you know, if Area 51 has, you know, hours that are set, you know, say like, sunup till sundown, or however that is, I think that would be very reasonable as well. Another comment that was made was on the Range Safety Officer side of thing. I had misspoke at one point, and I said that members would essentially be RSOs, and I meant to say that they will be RSOs, they'll be going through the full National Rifle Association Training Course. So that was just a easy correction to make. And as far as another concern, shooting towards the throughway, you know, obviously there are other shooting ranges in the area. There's one called Four Points in Spencerport, and they actually shoot directly towards the throughway as well. And they are about the same distance, about 1,000 feet from where you stand to shoot, versus where the throughway is, they've been around for a long, long time. And finally, I just wanted to, you know, mention again the land use and the area that that is, you know, it is in the town's plan as a, an outdoor recreation zone. I do think that based on its location, again, I assert that that is the perfect location for a shooting range in the town. And I would pose the question, you know, where else would it go? I, I do think it conforms well to the town's comprehensive plan, again, that is the outdoor recreation zone, and there are a lot of other plans that we have besides the shooting range. And in respect to the last person that spoke, and the point that they raised, another point that I would just like to bring attention to, to the board, I've talked with Mr. Mosher, we talk all the time, you know, we're neighbors, and it is very difficult, and it's going to continue to be very difficult, to get people to invest in businesses in that spot. If, now, and again, I understand the, the point of a, of a special use permit and the review process and, and things like that, but it would be very, very difficult to have any kind of investment in that area with, with that type of, dare I say, burden, you know, placed, placed where every year, you know, I mean, he's put hundreds of thousands of dollars in, in labor alone into that facility. I intend to do the same, and it's going to be very difficult for me to justify that if, you know, I'm allowed to do something, and then every year I have to fight, you know, to, to allow it to, to stay open. So I would just like to say too, as far as like the noise, I think that's people's, one of their primary concerns. I think we do have the safety issue covered, I, I think once people see the standards that we have, and the protocols, and the, the training standards that we have in place, I think people will see that the safety is, is something that we have covered, you know, easily. The noise, again, we have several solutions for that. We're gonna have trees planted throughout the property on the perimeter, the berms and the direction of fire that we have, we'll try to angle the noise away from the majority of people's homes. And there are many designs that we will be experimenting with, and one of the things that we're doing out there of, essentially, you know, you could have like a, a tube, like a, like a two-foot diameter, like a, like a pipe, you know, a culvert pipe essentially, and you could use that, you could put the, the firearm, say you're shooting a large rifle, I know people brought up the Barrett that I'm somewhat famous for, you know, you have a firearm like that, you put the muzzle in this device, you know, greatly reduces the noise, focuses it towards the targets, towards downrange, away from the populated areas. So I think, yeah, I think, I think that's my time, I think those were the majority of the things that I wanted to, to bring up, and I would like to, you know, continue working with, with the board, obviously, and the residents. This is something that we'd, we'd obviously, we want to bring this and all the other things that I want to do to this, this property. And I guess, if, if I may, I did have one question. Multiple people have asked me if it would be appropriate to ask the board for, well, I guess several things. I had sent an email, Chairwoman, regarding the, the letters, and the emails, and the information regarding people's complaints. I don't know if I can have access to that, as well as, you know, whatever notes they may have, you know, if I, if I can have access to their issues, I can address them, you know, as well as having some type of event, if it's possible to have a, you know, a singular, like one-day event, where we could have, you know, I mean, this intends to be a shooting range open, you know, on the weekend, say with 20, 30, 40 people there in a competition. Could we run a competition, say, later in this summer, where we could have that number of people out there, so the residents could see, you know, what this is going to be like? We could have a company come out and do a sound study, and do the appropriate studies, and see like, okay, yes, it's, it's audible, but it's not at a level that's deemed, you know.
Brandon, your, your time, your time really is up. Let me just tell you that if, if you want anything to go on in your property, you need to follow through with the letter the engineers sent you. You need to start sending us the information, and they outlined everything very clearly. So you would need a special use permit before you could hold any events out there. In order to do that, you need, you need to fulfill the requirements that the engineers have set up. And the second question, I checked with the town clerk, if you file a Freedom of Information request, you can get the letters. We probably will take the names off them, but give you the bodies of the letters. I'm not sure on that, you have to go through Tresta Marasco.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure if that's like a normal process to just, you know, without having to go through, you know, such a formal, formal procedure, you know, of having to do that request. I didn't know if that was just a normal.
We have to, we have to do everything correctly, and that's, that's the way she spelled it out to me.
Okay.
Okay? Is there anybody else that wishes to speak tonight? Okay, if not, we'll go on to our regular meeting. The first thing I would like is a motion to take the site plan review for Batavia Solar off the table.
Kathy, I think, Corey, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I did, can you hear me?
Okay, go ahead, I didn't see you.
No, that's all right. Um, I don't know, Board Member Jazinski, if you received my email earlier today.
I did.
Did you get the video?
I didn't see a video, I just saw the email.
Oh, uh, there should be attached to it, a video, that I recorded on April 28th, it was right around 7:15 PM, of some shots going off at Polar Wave, they were definitely not quiet, and definitely an excessive nuisance, had my family or pets been outside, or even if I had my windows open. I have no doubts this will be a, a pretty large concern if this is passed and allowed to be constructed. I do want to go through the letter a little bit that I wrote to you for the other board members who are present. It also came to my attention that Mr. Lewis is basically soliciting his customers and anyone who will listen to him to sign a pre-written letter, and is sending these to the town himself. I do find the letter to be wrong on multiple accounts. Having people from outside the town, or even Genesee County, send in letters that claim our concerns are not valid is absolutely ridiculous. I don't believe I would have much of a say if a train station was being built next to homes in Syracuse, so to be told my concerns are not valid from someone who lives, you know, even 10-plus miles away, is pretty unbelievable to me. The letter also implies there's no such thing as peace and quiet here. While I will admit that having the throughway in Area 51 does result in some noise, you will see that the video clearly shows the addition of the shooting range will escalate that quite a bit. Just because there's a little noise here, you know, it doesn't condemn us to the addition of more. You know, if I have a mess at my house, you know, I clean it up, I don't add more to it. The claims that the discharge of firearms in the distance is no different than a blown-out tire on the throughway. I've been living here for a few years now, and confirm that, I can confirm that I do not hear 100 tires blowing out on the throughway, you know, every 15 minutes. I also have read some of the things posted on Mr. Lewis's firing pin Facebook page, and also the firing pin Discord server that I found to be rather troublesome. The residents of this area have been called many names, a lot of which I'm, I'm just not going to say on the stream, but the G-rated ones are idiots, morons, even Nazis. One person going as far to suggest we should all go out into the middle of the I-90, presumably to probably get run over. This is hosted on his page, the same guy who is supposedly, supposedly choked up about Deputy Shildwasser's question, questions about this incident are no-no, but when it's us standing in the middle of the 90 to get run over, yeah, that's all right. Another one of his members had wrote an email claiming to be going to Polar Wave location and spending a bunch of money, getting dinner locally, namely at Ralph and Rosie's, where it has, quote-unquote, "become the name of his dinner table," but only a few hours earlier, asking everyone what the name of the pizza place was. That story was a complete fabrication, I, I actually wonder how many of these emails are really legitimate. Photos of Deputy Shildwasser's property were also uploaded to this Discord server, so now Mr. Lewis's followers and customer are now aware of where he lives. He also suggested going over to Polar Wave after the last public hearing we had. He must have been a little upset, he wanted to take his 50-cal sniper rifle over there with some machine guns. He also suggested sending the planning board a picture of an unshirted man using a cat as a gun, as if a 10-year-old was sending it to his friend for laughs. I'm not sure if it was to point fun of some of our animal concerns, but it just seems kind of extremely juvenile to me. I do have photos of all the comments and the pictures, if you guys want me to send them in. The bottom line is, it's, it's kind of concerning. Mr. Lewis claimed over and over how he wants to be a good neighbor, but I just can't seem to see where he cares if he does or not. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else? Okay, well, that concludes that part of our agenda. We now, now I would entertain a motion to take the site plan review for Batavia Solar off the table.
Kathy, do you, Kathy, do you want to close the public hearing that you still have open, or after?
No.
Your motion?
No, not until, not until I get to when we discuss the application.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, Paul.
Paul McCullough, I make the motion to take it off the table?
Second, John Long.
Second by John Long? Okay, so the last meeting, we did the.
Kathy, we gotta do our vote.
Oh, for the oh for taking it off the table. Roll call, please. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Paul McCullough?
Yes.
Jonathan Long?
Yes.
Don Partridge?
Yes.
Paul Marquesi?
Yes.
Brooks Holly?
Yes.
Kathy Jazinski?
Yes. Okay, so at our last meeting, we did the secret, and we also had the public hearing held on February 2nd, and we started to talk about the site plan review. And some of the things in the secret were going to be mitigated at the site plan review, and we also had a question about the family, the Woods family, building from, from the project. So we have, Kalen, are you going to speak tonight?
Yeah, I could speak tonight. Jim is here as well, to represent the engineer.
But I'd like, I'd like someone to talk about the protection for the Wood family.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Oh, okay, yeah, so I spoke actually with Michelle Wood today, I don't know if she joined the meeting, but I showed her the site plan that we have with the proposed landscaping, and we talked about it, and, yeah, we basically came to an agreement that we would work with her down the road, and determine what works best for her. She has some plantings already, that are already there, so we want to work around that. But we have an agreement to, you know, continue working with her and to be a good neighbor, and, you know, we're on the same page regarding that.
Is Mrs. Woods here today? Mr. and Mrs.? Okay, go, go ahead, Kalen and Jim, go ahead. Is there anything more you want to tell us?
Um, I also, with me, I just noticed that the email I had emailing the landscape plan to the board was stuck in my Outbox, so if the board would allow me, I can share the landscape plan with you guys.
Good.
Is, is that okay?
Yes.
Um, I just requested somebody allow me to share my screen.
Sarah, Sarah will do that.
Thank you very much. And I apologize, I didn't realize the email was stuck in my Outbox, for whatever reason.
Should be allowed to now.
All right, let me try it again. Sweet, there it is. All right, screen three. Let me know when you guys are all able to see that, please?
I can.
Perfect. So as you can see, this is the woodhouse, these are all the plantings, we have right now 15 white spruce that we are planting behind the wood property, and what you, you don't see on here is, right here is their garage, so they, they wouldn't see it from here, and they have some plantings over here. So we were, as Kalen mentioned, we're working around them, and as we near construction, we can always work with them if they would like something other than white spruce. Because we, this is going to be in their backyard, we want to make sure that they're happy with the plantings on, on our facility, at our facility. Question. One of the, did somebody say something?
Yes, Partridge.
Yes, sir.
Are you not planning to do any kind of berm?
Uh, we can, the issue is, berming it could create a runoff issue with them, so if you would like, we can revisit the berm idea. I just, I, I really want to not send any runoff or drainage stuff their way, because as you can see, the drainage goes to the west. So with it going to the west, I don't want to put a berm there that's going to create any obstruction for the drainage coming off of their property. Again, that to me, even though it's their, their runoff, that would be being a bad neighbor.
Was it, was it any discussion with the Woods about a berm?
I did not request a berm, no.
Okay.
And, and, and I, I hope my assumption with, you know, making sure we didn't affect their drainage, drainage was okay. I know I went one, at my old house, when my neighbor put in a raised bed, and it ended up causing drainage issues in my yard, I was not happy about it, but, you know, we got along with it.
Yeah, Kalen, this is, this is Paul, and the question was, was there discussion about a berm? I understand that they didn't request one, did they know they could ask for one?
Um, no, I did not share that with them, but.
Okay.
So, again, we can add one if they'd like one.
Well, but, but I, but I don't know that they've even been approached with a, a choice. That's, that was, I think that's what Don was trying to ask, was.
Okay.
Did, was, did anybody talk to them about options?
Yeah, I told them that they, we could do whatever they wanted.
Yeah, unfortunately, in layman's terms, they may not know anything, you know, you're right. And, you know, that, that's sort of a wide-open kind of thing, if you understand what you to ask for. And I don't know that, you know, me, if I wasn't on a planning board, I wouldn't have a clue, you know?
That's a fair point.
Well, they did attend their last meeting, or our public hearing.
Our public hearing, yes.
That's true.
Yeah, and I do believe that they heard the discussion and understood what we were saying would be, what we thought was good.
I, I just.
And we did mention the berm.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that, that we're not going to get, you know, blindsided by, well, I didn't know, kind of thing, so, which is okay, not a big deal.
Okay. Okay, the other screenage issue is you guys, the board, I shouldn't use the term, you guys, asked for screening along Stephen Holly Drive there. As you can see, we've added considerable screening along the roadway, and even wrapped it around the corner to help obscure it from a oncoming traffic going down the road there. So, and I can, and I again apologize that this got stuck in my Outbox, I can absolutely forward this to you guys, or try again to forward it to you guys. But I just, again, I just wanted to show that we've got an extensive amount of planting, there's over 200 plants that we're going to use to help screen this site. And we're not using, we're not using five-gallon pot plants either, the smallest plant, the installed size will be six foot.
Steve Mountain, what do you think about this?
Please, please.
Hello?
Steve Mountain? Is Steve muted?
No, I don't believe so.
He might, he might have walked away, he might have walked away from the phone.
Uh, Jim, this is Paul McCullough, I got a, a kind of sort of related question to the screening.
Yes, sir.
Zoom into the area where you're going to have the electric poles, and how are you handling the poles, ground mount equipment, stuff like that?
Okay.
In more detail?
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, so, as I had mentioned here, this equipment is blocked from the wood residents because their garage is right here. Right. So that's what the screenage is there, and there is on the roadway side, plantings over here.
Right, so now. Right, so now how about the number of poles, how much equipment is ground mount? Because as you know, on the previous three or four solar farms that we spoke about, we wanted the least number of poles out there and the most amount of equipment ground mounted, not forty, fifty feet up in the air?
I, I understand where you're coming from. Right here is the equipment pad for the transformers and inverters and everything right there.
Okay.
As for poles, right now, I believe we have one, two, three, four, five, and we can work with utility company to reduce that number.
Good.
The, the issue we have is the utility companies, from my experience anyways, other developers may have had different experiences, is that at least until you're going to get ready to the building phase, they want everything separated on poles. They're, and to me, I'm not an electrical engineer, there's some things that they do that don't make sense, like they won't allow two pieces of equipment on a single pole, even though it's a private pole.
Yeah, correct, but I, I understand that National Grid has their rules. We, we're kind of, our hands are tied a little bit because of the utility. But we want to make sure that the privately owned poles are kept to an absolute bare minimum.
We can, I believe we can approach National Grid for pedestal mounted.
Because, because.
You know, you know what I mean by pedestal, like the.
Yeah, yeah, the ground mount stuff and.
Yeah.
Because if you look at the solar farms, Kathy and I drive by two of them every day, going in Batavia out on Bowman's property, they ground mounted quite a bit of the stuff and there's only three poles, maybe four. I believe on Truesdale, we had the same agreement with the developer that there would be ground mount equipment, absolute minimal amount of poles. So I'm kind of, I want to hold true to form on this project also.
I think that's a fair request. Kalen?
Yeah, I don't have the most experience with that since I'm not an engineer, but I will make sure that we do our best to reduce the amount of poles. I just can't speak to the technical aspect too much.
Yeah, I, I, I don't expect zero poles, but I don't want a dozen of the silly things out there.
Right, of course.
No, I totally understand.
When we get to the special use permit, we will give you the same rules that the last developers followed. And that is one of them, Paul. Is there any more questions?
Yeah, Kathy, that's John. I have a question on the screening for the Woods. It looks like those trees are right on the property line and then it looks like there's overhead electric on the other side of them. Is there enough room in there for those trees to get large enough without, you know, coming onto the Woods property and then, you know, being underneath the electric overhead power lines?
They're spaced so that they are not going to be interfering with the power lines. I know it's tough to see at this scale because obviously the trees appear bigger in scale than they actually will be with regards to what the spacing. Everything right now is properly on our property and will be maintained as such.
Okay, so the dark line is a property line, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that those trees, once they're matured, that they're not, you know, hanging on the wood property. There's enough room in there for them to mature and not infringe on somebody's property.
I understand that. Yes, sir.
Okay, Steve Mountain's with us now. Steve, can you tell us?
My phone, my phone wasn't linking.
Okay, can you tell us what you think about this site plan?
Yeah, I think we're just kind of waiting for it to get submitted, but I mean, I think from the engineering issues, I mean, there's still things we need to go through with the developer, but there's nothing to prevent, you know, approval. So I think it was just down to making sure the planning boards, all the screening and other modifications that you were looking for have been provided. Is there any specific questions?
If we decided to pass this tonight, we would do it depending on engineers' approvals?
Yeah, just the final review and approval, yep.
Okay.
Jim, did you do any visualizations? The growth visualizations?
We have not done any growth visualizations. And as you know, there are two types of visualizations, the line of sight and photorealistic. Which, which one would you be requesting, I guess is the question?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what, on the other ones, they would do the, I think it was more the photorealistic visualizations with the app planted growth and then like one year, five year, ten year. Just to, just to see from the road, like how, how much of the panels would be visible.
What I can do is, I can, if you allow me to stop sharing my screen, I could show you the difference between the two. And then I'll share that. If, if that would. You know, so is, would you guys like me to show the difference or not?
Yes, I believe so.
So I'm gonna go for it.
Come here, look at it.
All right, there's a. All right, I am just spare with you that I open up the file here. I can share again.
I think what the other developers have done, Jim, is show the photo simulations from the vantage points. Like the Woods property, obviously, the hill goes up to the, towards the Med Tech Center. You know, so obviously, they'll see panels for a long time before the trees get to a certain height. So I think that's the type of thing that the planning board was looking for.
Okay, so I think this will clear it up. So this is a completely unrelated site. And this is, as is, and this, of course, it's not clicking over. Why isn't it clicking over? This is what the the photorealistic would look like. You can see the panels in the back behind this house and as you had mentioned, the additional poles. And the line of sight is exactly that. It's a profile across the site where you would pick a viewing vantage point. And you would show what would be seen and you would scale the perimeter screening right here per the years of growth that you're looking for. Those are the two different types.
Yeah, what we've gotten in the past were the photorealistic from different viewpoints along the property.
Okay.
And I think we got, we got it up to five and ten years, so we could see how it would, how it would look at that time.
Okay, yeah, we, we do regularly do that with, you know, at five and ten for the photorealistic vantage points.
Okay, are there any other questions? I don't, I don't know if we can vote on this tonight if we still have information we need. Steve Mountain, what's your opinion?
I mean, that's totally up to the board. You have to feel comfortable that the screenings and things that you, you know, are asking for, you know, meet what you're expecting. And I think, you know, I think you want to make sure that the Woods, and it's, and I, I think everybody appreciates this of everybody to work with, with the Woods and, you know, even construction, but my experience is it's always better that everybody is on the same page where you start of what's expected and what's gonna be built. You know, so we don't fall into the project and then all of a sudden there's, you know, neighbor issues. They weren't, they thought they were expecting something else, et cetera. So I think it's just important that the planning board make sure of that.
I agree with that.
Make note that after speaking with Michelle Woods today, she did mention that she already has screening in place in the form of Arbivites. So she's not intending to take those out at any point. So she does already have natural screening and we would just be adding additional screening to that.
I would like, this is Partridge, I would like to make, see this table. I'm not really sure I'm ready to vote for it without. I'd like to actually talk to the Woods myself.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Paul McCullough, I second it.
Okay, Kim, would you take a roll call, please?
I'm Partridge.
Yes.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Paul Marquesi.
Yes.
Jonathan Long.
Yes.
Brooks Holly.
Yes.
Kathy Jazinski.
Yes. Okay, well, it looks like we'll be having this on our next agenda and hopefully we would have all our questions answered. We'll have time to review the information that you shared with us today. And we will also address the special use permit. If you'd like, I can get you a list of what we required for the special use permit for Truesdale. And that would be similar to what we would request from you.
Yes, please.
Okay, is it, does anyone have anything to add to that? Okay, well, thank you for your presentation tonight and I will, you'll be on the agenda for, I believe it's the, maybe it's the eighteenth? Eighteenth, I think, of May.
I got a quick question. Obviously, the photo simulations take time. If I'm not, am I able to contact the board and say, if I'm not able to get those photorealistic simulations done by the eighteenth, am I able to request that we push another meeting or do I need to show up?
Nope, just let me, just let me know and I'll put you on the proper agenda.
Yeah, I just, just because there's a lot of computer work that goes into those things and they, there's a lot of work, so.
Okay, you, you get in touch with me and let me know what the agenda you want to be on.
All right, thank you. For now, let's tentatively set the eighteenth and I'll reach out to you if we need to push it back. I thank you again for your patience.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, next on the agenda is the application by Core for a special use permit to add the drive-through to the existing commercial building, so they can open a new restaurant to hold it, which it seems to be a favorite of everybody's. Before we go any further, I will close the public hearing. First, is there anyone that wishes to speak? This is a public hearing on the proposed drive-through. Okay, I will now close that. I, I don't see what time it is, Kim. You'll have to check the time.
Seven forty-three PM, public hearing closed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so this is the application by Core. No one from Core is here. Steve Mountain or Matt Mahaney? Would you like to talk about this? Which Matt already gave us a brief review.
If you want to go ahead, Steve, that's fine and I can follow up if the board has any further questions.
Yeah, I don't have an electronic of the site plan, but I don't know, do you guys have that in front of you or? Again, it's a drive-through on the, would be the northwest side of the, the building. You know, it's pretty cut and dry. You know, there's a few engineering issues that, you know, a lot to work through, but you know, from the site plan, I don't see any issues at all with it.
Okay, any questions from the board? You all got a copy of it. This got approved by County Planning. They said that the special use permit to add the drive-through to an existing commercial building will not propose a significant countywide or intercommunity impact. So they gave a full approval. Did they have a presentation made to them, Steve?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't either. I didn't go to that meeting. But, but you know, you, you're familiar with it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And your opinion is it's, it's okay to put it in?
Yeah, I mean, we're just gonna make sure of some of the safety issues with the traffic or make sure that everything's designed accordingly.
Okay.
Kathy, this is Brooks. I've been over in that area and it's a pretty small parking lot. How are the cars gonna be lined up for the drive-through?
Yeah, they're gonna be, the drive-through is gonna be on the northwest side. Let me, let me just, if you give me one second, I'll go, go grab the hard copy plans, see where the stacking areas.
I think that's a good idea. We'll wait for you. In the meantime, if anybody has anything to talk about for that, we can. I went and looked at it and I agree, Brooks, it looks small, but I don't know, somehow people get into where they want to go, as long as we're careful.
Do they have a number of how many cars are gonna go through the drive-through in an hour or day or anything like that?
I haven't seen anything on that.
Yeah, I can imagine it'd be pretty busy during lunch and dinnertime. There's lots of businesses and parking spots in there.
I mean, granted, it won't be like Tim Hortons out onto the street.
Right.
So that, that's a, that's a plus, but.
Or Dunkin' Donuts out on the street.
And I think also you're, you're limiting yourself to where it is. You know, it's, it's on the west end of town, so from a business perspective, if you're downtown, you're not, you're probably not gonna drive fifteen minutes to go get something to eat by the time your lunch hour is done.
Well, plus all the car buffering is gonna be in a parking lot.
Right.
I mean, you'll, you'll probably annoy the people trying to get out of their spot if they're blocked in.
I think that's, that's the biggest influence is probably gonna happen.
Yeah.
They show a five-car stacking. So they've got room for five cars to stack.
Okay. Was it, there's no other, you said there were some other safety issues that they had to look through?
Well, just pedestrian traffic. We just want to make sure that, you know, proper signage, any crosswalks, things like that. That's really the only issue.
Thanks, Steve.
Well, if, if it's okay, I'll make a motion that they, to approve based on the engineering okay's.
Okay, second by Brooks Holly. Roll call, please, Kim. This is on the special use permit.
Paul Marquesi.
Yes.
Brooks Holly.
Yes.
Jonathan Long.
Yes.
Don Partridge.
Yes.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes. Okay, well, and that's gonna be up to the engineers then and hopefully it'll work out good. The county didn't see a problem, so let's, let's hope it did. I'm disappointed someone from Core didn't come to the meeting because we always like that. But I hate to hold them up in their building either.
Yeah, I'm a little surprised that they, they didn't come either. I mean, Bergman, I mean, they've never missed a meeting, so.
Yeah, I was surprised, but.
Yeah, who did you talk to, Kathy?
I did not talk to anyone on this, only Dan.
Oh, okay.
So I, they had not gotten in touch with me at all, which is unusual.
Yeah, I'm surprised they weren't here.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is a zoning enforcement officer report. And Matt Mahaney, are you now the zoning enforcement officer?
I am whatever the planning board needs me to be. It just happens to be for, we, we've been quite busy as of late with, with our workload and submissions, so just because of scheduling and other meetings, Dan asked me to attend tonight's meeting. In regards to any update for our department, our building and zoning department, we do not have any current new applications in. uh, we do not have any current, uh, new applications in. Right now, we are working with previously approved applications and, and, uh, permits that have been issued by the, uh, and approved by the planning board. So right now I don't have much to update you guys with. Uh, just what we have on the, the agenda for this evening that you guys have discussed and, uh, things that we've already been approved and, and we're working along with the developers.
Hey, thank you, Matt. How about you, Steve?
Um, just one quick item, uh, Brookwood Estates. Um, Kathy, you probably remember that. Don, you may remember. Goes back, I think, to the 90s.
Was it the trailer park?
The, yeah, the, the, we'll call it manufactured home park now.
Yes, okay.
On, uh, Wharton Dyke and, and Pearl Street.
Yeah.
Um, the engineer met with Dan and I to get some updated information, uh, mostly on sewer. Um, but it, you know, and again, we get this about every five years, but, you know, we, um, we gave them the list and information so that they can kind of bring an update to the board. Um, hopefully in the near future. Um, as a, you know, it's more than a concept. It's been designed several times probably, but, um, so that may be coming forward. So that was really the only, only thing that I had.
Is it the same owner?
Um, it's Granite Land Corporation, uh, the Ashford Management Group. I don't know if that's the same as.
It doesn't ring a bell. I don't know.
Yeah.
They've been to our board, or several times since I've been on the board.
Yeah, same with me.
You know, Steve, maybe you could ask Mary to pull minutes from some of those meetings in the 90s, just to refresh us.
Yeah, or, you know, it may be, it's, it may be better just to start fresh with a fresh set of plans and, and, uh, or, you know, whatever you think and, but they can, Mary can definitely pull those.
Okay. Well, thank you for letting us know. It, it was very interesting concept and, and I really liked it, but we'll, and that's why we put the sewer out there.
Yeah, I mean, we extended it for, you know, down Main and up Wharton Dyke just a little ways. So they have a long ways to run the public sewer, but that was always their, um, reason that they, it was just too expensive for them um, to build their own treatment plant. So it's now close enough for them. Um, it's 156-unit, um, plant, so it's, it's pretty large. And again, you know, we asked for a lot of information so that we can get it to all of you.
Oh, good. I always thought it was a good place to put it, but we'll see what the board thinks when they come back to us. Okay, anything else from zoning? Sharon, do you have anything from the town board?
Hey, did we find out anything about, uh, Jerry Arena? Um, what he, what he's going to be doing there?
I did not. Matt, do you know anything about Jerry Arena?
Are you, um, speaking about over on Lewiston Road?
Yes.
Yes, um, we, uh, we have not been able to make contact as of yet. We just do, we do want to find out what exactly, um, I believe you're referring to the, uh, vendor space for lease. Um, and that's obviously a question that's valid and something we need to look into. We have not come up with any answers as of yet, but we will be looking into that and be able to update you further.
None problem. I was just curious.
I, I think everybody is.
Well, we'll probably ask again next meeting, Matt.
Um, Kathy, would it be possible before the next meeting, since you're bringing in, um, uh, Area 51, could we get a copy of the special use permit that was given to them so we can refresh ourselves since it's been a couple of years?
Yes, I'll make sure you get that. Good idea. Okay, now Sharon, do you have anything from the town board that we'd be interested in?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for attending. Um, my report, I've just been inundated with letters, both supporting and against the property, Brandon Lewis property. I've been forwarding a lot to you, probably not all of them. I'm just going to have to sit here one afternoon and just keep forwarding them. Um, or, or I'll make copies and have them available. But if he's going to, uh, request them, we are going to, we'll have to make copies and we'll have to take the names and addresses off. I think, I'm working with Tressa. Whatever she decides is the way we'll handle it. So that's all I got to say about that. You all still want me to forward letters, right? Got your heads? Yes.
Yeah, um, yeah. Yeah, I had the opportunity, um, to actually talk to one of the neighbors there, uh, not purposely, but, you know, because of where I work. Um, there was quite a bit of concern with, you know, direction of fire. Um, having Area 51 on one side and a firing range on the other. That's, you know, a lot of people racing around in the woods and, uh, motorcycles and quite a few people with weaponry on the other side. You know, to make sure that we take that in consideration, the, the gentleman was quite adamant that we, um, take the number of people that are going to be close by doing dissimilar things. And making sure that, um, we take that into account. And the other thing that the gentleman brought up was uh, confirmed hours of operation. He, he wasn't so much concerned with Area 51 because he said he moved in after Area 51 was there. So he, he knew it was in existence. And so he has no, um, as, as he put it, he has no reason to complain because he knew it was there and he still bought his property. But he has, uh, concern with hours of operation, um, that there's going to be a shooting range going on.
Yeah, I believe we all do. And I hope you all got the letter that the engineers wrote. Uh, Tom Lichtenfeld, Steve Mountain and Dan Lang put, uh, put together a letter. And it outlined everything he needs to do. He's got a lot, a lot of reports to prove, to prove the safety. And, uh, all of our questions, he has to answer them. And he, he, he has not made any effort yet. So we're just going to have to wait until, until he starts producing the material we need and then we can start addressing it.
Kathy, it's Kim. I have a question on this. Um, that gentleman that was stating that there was, um, stuff put out on Mr. Lewis's, uh, Facebook page and everything, especially about Mr. Schillboyster, his home and everything else. Is there any way that we can request anything on that? I mean, it's now looking like to me, it's like some sort of an invasion of privacy. That people that are against, that are for this can, can look up anybody and go to any one of their houses and do something wrong.
Unfortunately, the, the internet lets us do that. But I'm, I'm, I'm going to put a call into the sheriff tomorrow and see what kind of input he has.
And to me, I would like the board to be able to see the supposed letters that are going out from Brandon. If, if this is.
Okay, they're coming to you. Yeah, yeah, I'm working from home this week and I don't have the equipment to scan and to send things. But I'm going to ask either Sarah or Tressa if they would send one tomorrow. But, uh, I'll, I'll get in touch with them. Okay?
Thanks.
Kim, what's your question?
Those are all good questions. Yes.
From what you're saying, it's, it's, I think it's called doxing, doc, doxing? And I'm not.
Yeah, I've heard that.
I, I, I mean, to me, knowing who the individual is, to me, it's not fair play that's going on. And, and that goes negatively against what he should be trying to do in order to have the board make some sort of decision on it.
I, I agree. You know, I, I.
Yeah, well, I will get all the information out. I wish I could have done it sooner, but I will. And, and I didn't hurry because he's not hurrying.
Yeah.
But I'll make sure that you have everything we need.
So like this Mr. Coles, Corey Coles, the, the last one in this book. So, and I got to go on the assumption because it's, I, um, I believe, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I assume Brandon owns the property. But because it's private property, um, is he, can he have parties out there doing shooting? Because the way Mr. Cole made it sound is this is turning into a regular event, like a group of people go out there and shoot and leave or something?
Well, the, the way Dan told us was if, uh, if you own the property, you can shoot on it. People can do that on their own property. He can't hold events. And that's what I told him today. You can't hold an event, a publicized event. But if he went down there with, on his own property with his own gun, that's nothing different than any of us could do.
All right.
That, that's what Dan told me. Matt or Steve, do you have any other ideas?
That is a correct statement, Kathy. What, what Dan had told you, uh, is no different than any of us using our own private property. But you have to be careful, uh, stepping over the line of advertising and using it as a commercial entity, uh, for your private property.
Yeah, that's exactly what he told me.
All right, so there wouldn't, there wouldn't be any way that we could tell if, you know, he was out there.
If it's an event or if it's just a private person, probably not unless we went down and looked.
All right.
Or we, somebody should be keeping track and maybe I'll start doing that of his website and his, his Facebook page because he does, he does say a lot on that.
Well, I know I was down there just kind of scoping out the property a few days ago and there was a bunch of cars there. So I don't know what all was going on. And like I said, a bunch of cars, uh, like five cars, five vehicles or so.
Yeah.
So I don't know, you know, five family members or what.
But if it's his own personal property, Paul, he, he has all rights to be on it and we, nobody can say anything.
Well, I just want to make sure something isn't going on, you know, look at my right hand, but don't pay attention to my left.
Yeah, well, that's, that's bothered me right along with him because even last year he had some things. And they were publicized events. And, and that's always bothered me. But I could go over to John Delapenos with my 22 and shoot.
Yeah.
And nobody could stop us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just think it's a.
You know, it can be done.
It's a bad first introduction for the neighbors. You know, they're property owners that have been in the town for many years and to do the, the stuff online, in my opinion, is just not, not right. Um, but like you said, he hasn't addressed any of the letter, the issues in the engineer's letter. He hasn't really given us a, a site plan or a plan of what he really wants to do. So until that happens, um, we gotta kind of just wait on it, I guess.
I would hope that it, usually if some, if somebody's doing something wrong, like shooting, we'll get phone calls. And if so, we could go and see. I'm not afraid to go down there and see what they're doing. So.
Oh yeah, I, I, I'd ride down there too, so.
Yeah, well, you might get a call from me, Paul. We'll ride down and see.
No problem. I don't have a problem, yeah.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
Kathy, did you get my email that there were more letters in your mailbox?
Oh, I got the letters. Those are the ones I was talking about on my report. There were like 32 of them. And they were form letters where people only put in their name and address on the top and sign their name. They came in the very same envelopes, the very same stamps. It looked like one person sent them. So like maybe it.
There's more in your, in your mailbox.
Oh, thank you. I'll, I'll pick them up.
Okay.
There's no hurry because they all say the same. They're just different people's names. But I will get one of those letters to you all.
We need to keep the post office busy.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering if that's, so I'm wondering if that's the form letter that, that Mr. Uh, Coles was talking about then.
It was. Yeah, I don't know how he knew about it, but yeah, it was.
No.
There's no difference between a form letter and here, sign this petition.
Petition, yeah.
That's, that's all it is. So, you know, there's.
That's exactly right. And that's why I'm not in any hurry to get them because they are all the same, just different names. And most of the addresses are not local.
Yeah.
I would say all of them are local.
Those would not be relevant to this, uh, to me anyways in making a decision. I could care less if somebody from, uh, East Rochester, you know, said this is a good idea. Well, that's great. Why don't we put it in East Rochester then?
Yeah, because I, I only, I, my biggest concern are the peoples that are, you know, a mile or two around it.
Right.
To me, that's the neighbors.
I th- I think the letters are trying to help speak to his character, but then you see the stuff online and it's, it's, uh, to me, it's very concerning.
Yeah, I, I think, I saw some of that. I was like, ooh, that's some nasty stuff that's going on now.
Yeah, you're going to get another letter that's very concerning. I'll try to send it out tonight.
Yep.
Okay, now, anything else on, um, I have nothing else under my report. Does anyone have anything else? Okay, Brooks?
Motion to adjourn, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Paul McCullough, all in favor?
Aye.
Pauls, thank you very much. Another good meeting and we'll have lots to talk about. I'll send you everything I have.
And Kathy, if you want to scan stuff, and I have a machine in my house, so you, you know, we can, we can do it in probably 10 minutes.
I know, I was going to say I'm done with school too, and I can come down and help out if need be. If, you know, I bring up work.
It, you, you put it in, email address.
Thank you all.
Send them all to you and then you can disperse them.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything that urgent. When I can send you, I will. And everything else you'll get on Monday.
That's fine. Not a big deal.
Okay, so Sarah, I'll be talking to you tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
And Kim, thank you for taking the minutes. Thank you all for attending.
Good evening.
Steve Tanner, we didn't, we didn't see you much. Hello, Steve Tanner.
Well, the, the internet at my house did not work too well and I finally got on on my phone, which was giving me problems. But I listened to the entire meeting, so I, I did participate in, in hearing.
Okay, good. Okay, everybody should have got their payroll vouchers. Get them to me and I'll get them to Heidi.
You should have mine.
I got yours already, Paul. Okay.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
We'll see you all.
Thank you.